I call the Tuesday, June 26, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. This happens to be our last meeting of the year.
Mmm.
The fiscal year.
Yes, fiscal year.
And Madam Clark, would you?
Can you believe?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The first presentation this evening is the annual Virginia Port Authority update, delivered by Mr. Dustin J. Reinhardt, Virginia Port Authority's Director of State and Local Government Affairs. Mr. Reinhardt will share information on the port's business activities and cargo volumes, its expansion, automation plans, and other news about the Authority and its successes. The second presentation, Mrs. Sherri Neal, Inter-Governmental Affairs Manager, and Mr. Jeff Miller, Deputy City Attorney, will present the 2018 Virginia General Assembly Legislative Update. The presentation will include information on the top legislative outcomes and impactful new laws or ordinances impacting local government. The third and final presentation this evening is the 2018 Year-to-Date Financial Report, presented by Mrs. Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer. The report summarizes the budget to actual financial results for the 11th month period from July 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2018, for the city's operating funds, and includes financial projections for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Mr. Reinhardt.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and many members of City Council. I'm Dustin Reinhardt. Thank you for the introduction.
Yes.
I was going to see some of y'all the other day on the terminal. Hopefully, heard the good news, and we'll share that as we go along in this presentation as well. Just to give you an update, of course, y'all know where the terminals are. We got two here in the city of Portsmouth, one in Newport News and the other one in Norfolk. But we also have the other two that I think we kind of forget sometimes down here in Hampton Roads. And that's the one in Richmond that we took over that lease for. And now we have a long-term lease we just recently negotiated. And we have a Virginia inland port up in Front Royal, which I'll be driving up and back tomorrow, a good eight hours. So, but that's up there, and it's a good intermodal port, where we have truck-to-train, train-to-truck transportation for those container capacities. Just as a reminder of what the port is and what we're here as a mission, we are an authority under the Virginia Constitution. And we, just like, I guess ABC is an authority. The only difference is that we are not here to gain money for the state to put money into coffers. We're here to actually gain economic activity for our Commonwealth and around this area. So I think it's very helpful as a reminder for what we're here to do and what our mission statement is here at the port. As you guys know, the ships are getting larger, and TEUs, 20-foot equivalent units. Just about 2014, you see that we're at 8,500 TEU ships that are coming in. We're bound to be doubling that in the next two years, seeing 16,000 TEU ships. Just yesterday, when we were on the terminal, we announced that we are going to have a 14,500 ship come in about an hour after the ending of that event. And because of that, ships are getting bigger, 90% of the cargo is coming together. So when you have two 8,000 TEU ships, and those can combine to a 16,000 TEU ships, of course, you put that by the way the market goes, and you have fewer ships coming in. But these things are getting bigger with more cargo on it at one time. As you guys know, we're doing our capacity, excuse me, our expansions of Virginia National Gateway. We're going to increase it by 1.2 million containers annually, expand our rail operation, extend our berth, and add four more ship-to-shore cranes. What we're doing now here is we're adding each stack every month from here on out. Each stack is about 20% capacity of what the former Virginia National Gateway capacity was. As you saw yesterday, some of you are there, we are moving our RMGs right now. Those are those automatic gantry cranes. And we are moving containers into those new stacks. We are also testing the CRMGs, so our cantilever rail-mounted gantry cranes. Those are the ones that go over the train tracks. And by testing, we're not just running dry, we are actually putting containers on and off. So it's live testing, and they will be ready very quickly. Let's just get a nice little aerial view of what we're looking at when we do that expansion. And those now, as you saw yesterday, are having much more containers on there. And that is the northern part of Vig, so we're going down towards the current part that has the capacity. So this is the expansion project. This is just the gate entryway. We are adding some lanes for our truckers, making sure that they're happy with us as well. But we're gaining this capacity as well. We're actually expanding the footprint. So that meaning we could add more trucks on there, decrease our waiting times, and make sure they're in and out as quickly as possible. In the rail expansion, we have, we're going to have basically two, a south and a north bundle. And those are going to be four rail lines each. So with that expansion, that's what the CRMGs are going to be for. And those are the semi-automatic cranes that will be loading and unloading those trains, double-stack capacity for both CSX and Norfolk 7. And by extending this wharf, we're able to throw three ultra-large container vessels there at one time. Servicing those will be extremely beneficial with our added capacity. But also, when we have these ships in, with the state-of-the-art terminal that we have, we're able to get these ships in and out as quickly as possible, making room for our other areas such as PMT and NIT and Newport News to be as effective as possible as well. Just to get a reminder of what we are doing across the river at Norfolk International Terminal is that we are adding about 46% optimization to that same footprint. Why is this important? Well, number one, it's going to alleviate a lot of traffic on Vig, but also on PMT. And it's going to also further expand our ability at PMT to be running what I call the wildcard terminal. That could really bring in a lot of business for the Port of Virginia. And this is just an update of how we're going to have another 1 million containers between those two terminals, once we're finished, and that'll be in 2020. As I was alluding to, with our timeline, we have, again, every month you will see more stacks come online. That'll be going through until this time next year. That, this entire project will be complete by the time I come here next year. And again, with PMT's rising importance, like I said, it is the wildcard. It was used now as a way to alleviate some of that congestion between those two terminals. And now you're going to see a lot of that terminal being transformed and what we can really get some more business and diversify away from containers sometimes, because that can be really how we're getting the money where we need to be coming from.
And the size of the ship that comes to PMT is about 8,000 containers?
I believe, right now, we just dredged to what the number was. So it's 45 feet, I believe, where we just got to, and are maintained. And we're able to get a little larger than that. From last I saw, it was 10,000. But again, we will see less containers go there and maybe possibly more roll-on, roll-off.
Right.
Some options for some high-money markets. That's just some of our capacity, which we went through, 62% through truck, 35% through rail, and 3% through barge. I think it's important to remind that we have that RMT barge in Richmond that takes trucks off those local roads of ours, takes trucks off 64. It makes people who are coming here in Hampton Roads for tourism a little safer. But it also takes the wear and tear for our tax money, so we don't have to have as many trucks going over those roads. And like I said prior to, volumes are up, but the amount of ships calling to our berths are lower, because they are just bigger. And that's going to be a trend that you see industry-wide. Our trains are number one on the East Coast. We're now battling back and forth a little bit between New York. We overpassed them, they took it back, and we took it back this time. So right now, we are operating on the same capacity at which New York and New Jersey is operating when it comes to our rail. I think it's important, again, because we're taking trucks off the road or servicing areas further and further out, hitting Memphis, Chicago, St. Louis. And that's that network that I named. So we're able to hit and really be a gateway internationally for here. And it's calling to Portsmouth, from China all the way to Chicago, right here through Portsmouth. Again, just some of our abilities that we have, with 47 new businesses that have been expanding, 5,000 jobs. That's just to date of this year. So we are continually expanding, continually putting our footprint as an economic driver. And we also, I believe, are going to have number 48 announced this week. And I cannot remember that name, and I'll give it back to you when I do. So 48 businesses expanding. And this shows that it's all around the state. So we obviously have a lot of focus in Hampton Roads. We have a good amount in Richmond and a good amount in inland port. But we're seeing a lot of growth in Southwest as well, which is very great when you're looking at our statewide areas to be able to pull some more tax base in, alleviate some of the local pressure. There are some businesses that are right here within Portsmouth. Leave that up just a little bit, so you can see that.
Go back to that.
Yeah.
Dan Stevens' company.
Fort Real Food.
Well, he's not a user, he's a supporter of the port.
Okay.
Got it.
Sorry about that. Here's our Age Local Ports program. Your city has been a recipient of this award or this grant. For a few times, we helped with the city park in Parkside, Portside, excuse me. But this is always an option. Every year, we get $1 million from the state in order to help localities, particularly our host cities, see if we could develop a better relationship when it comes to water to the cities. So when we're having a nice little, the city park there, but also we had other things in Norfolk when it comes to bike trails, things that we're able to put a waterway to is something that is able to be done, applied for by the city. This is a slide I like to throw in there. A lot of people don't realize our Maritime Incident Response Team is the only one like it in the country. This gives support not only to the Coast Guard, not only to the Navy, but also gives support to our firefighters here locally, our policemen locally. I believe we had helped out with a lot of the personal protective equipment, some training. There was a pump that we also keep here as well for firefighting. That MERT is another one of those organization that really coordinates on a large scale, not only on the water, but areas that are just right next to it. Some organizations that we're involved with here in the port that we make sure that we support and help out with, as I sit on Ports of Partnership with the mayor. We are in communities and schools, which I also sit on the board there. And we're supporters of Elizabeth River Project, as well as Starbase Victory, and sit at PPIC as well. So our big news right now is dredging. Talking about it for a long time. I think we're authorized for over 30 years, or just about 30 years. And reason being is, well, we need to be marketing ourselves. And how do you market? Well, we need to have the best and deepest waters in order to bring these huge ships here. If we don't have the ability to bring these ships here, they won't come here, which means we lose on monies to the Commonwealth. We lose out on opportunities for our markets to grow, and we lose out on opportunities for our port to grow. If you look on here, and this is one thing that I do think is very pivotal to our project here in Hampton Roads, is that New York, New Jersey is going to spend well over $2 billion to get to 50 feet, or 52 feet, I believe. Charleston to get to 52 is going to be almost half a million, or, excuse me, half a billion. That's actually already over. They're looking at about 700 right now. Savannah is almost at a billion projected. It's already over that. They're already over those costs. And you look at ours, it's going to be about $330 million. That $330 million is both a 50/50 cost to the state and to the federal government. And that's to reach these depths around there, and then the width right there in Thimble Shoals. Again, that $330 million is the total cost. So half of that goes to the state, half of that goes to the federal government. And the width is important for military and for the port, to make sure we have two-way traffic. So we don't have to shut that down. Because not only, when we shut down that waterway, not only are we stopping ships from naval ships coming through, but they also have to stop training. And if they have to stop training for three or four hours, maybe a vessel's late, they've lost a full day. So it's something that we're being very mindful of, particularly with the Coast Guard and their operations as well. And we're using that when we go up to the federal government and asking why, how can we help y'all out? Because we want to ensure that not only are we good with our markets, but we stay away from BRAC and things like that. And then, when we are dredging, we had that full $330 million came from the state. That was bond capacity. We got that just weeks ago after the governor signed it. We had the $20 million cash to fully fund our preliminary engineering design with an MOU by the federal government already signed, an Army Corps of Engineers. The cool thing about that project is that with one asset we're building, we're building also another. This is the future, I believe, of the Port of Virginia, and y'all know it, right here in Portsmouth. And this is the Cranny Island Marine Terminal, which would have about 5 million annual capacity of containers. It puts us on the same capacity level as New York, New Jersey. We far surpass Savannah and definitely opens the market for PMT and Newport News to be those wildcard terminals that we expect them to be when it comes to other areas of revenue. Right now, we're waiting on the federal government to do something, which I know, I think a lot of us are, every aspect of it. But we are, right now, advocating to be able to close those cells in order to begin building, at least the foundation for Cranny. We don't see this another, maybe 20 years. It's definitely not a project right around the corner. We still have the optimization of the north end of Norfolk we're going to be trying to look at, too. But this is definitely a project that, on the East Coast, makes Virginia number one. Okay, that's huge.
Has the EIS been completed for that?
I believe so. And the one thing I do really like about this project, and particularly with the city of Portsmouth, is that everybody has the ability, we go around making this terminal, ensuring that we have a 21st century model, 21st century expectation on transportation, and ensuring that we're having a rail being mindfully placed and our road traffic being mindfully placed as well.
Bill? Will the dredge material from the deepening of the harbor also go in Cranny?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, we're working on a project with the Army Corps of Engineers that will benefit both Norfolk and Virginia Beach with their beach replenishment. And then the rest of that will be building with Cranny. The reason why we can't use a lot of those sands near Thimble Shoals on the eastern side of it is too fine, so it's more of a beach sand than it is a building sand. And Army Corps of Engineers is having a very, it's a pilot program, to be able to reuse that in a beneficial sense. We've already looked at, speaking with Elizabeth River Project, how we could possibly work with them and some beach replenishment mitigation sources. The costs weren't there for that yet, but we're definitely looking, ensuring that we could have as much beneficial reuse with this sediment, not only just building Cranny, but also helping other local communities and host cities. Yes, ma'am.
Where's the timeline on the start and finish of this future program?
There is no timeline as of yet. They're just trying right now to close those cells, build it up. And like I said, if we get all the permits in line, I think it's even still a 10-year build after that. And we're not even there within that aspect of building that. We want to actually make sure we have both Norfolk and Vig and PMT up to date and ensuring that we're running full capacity there before we look at that. Just because why build so much money and put so much money into something when we still have the ability to make our own terminals that we have already better? Any other questions? Let me off easy here?
With what's going on with the tariffs, what kind of impact do you perceive that on the container volume?
A lot of impact. I think steel was the first one that everybody said is going to impact us. We don't see that as much of an impact, just due to the market and where America mainly gets their steel. Has there been some, let's look at the numbers, kind of days? Absolutely, particularly when it came to aluminum. But we have not seen much of a hit. A lot of those are going to be, really, the people that are going to be hurt are the ones that are producing that material, whatever it is, either good or bad. It just really depends what market we're talking about. When it comes to logging, they got hit with a little bit of the fumigation stuff, that China wanted to ensure that there were fumigation for all these logs that were coming through. And basically, they essentially followed their actual law that they had on the books. And it's kind of, you sometimes kind of give a blind eye to certain things when they're shipping. But it's really become, as a port of the whole, we're not at all hurting. I don't believe it's going to hurt us much at all. Again, you never know, it happens next week, or what's tweeted out. But yes, we're doing fine as a port in general. But there are some of the clients and users that are possibly looking harder at their books than we would have to. Thanks.
In the manufacture that, sending goods to Chicago, why would they go to Georgia?
Why won't they go to Georgia?
Why would they?
Why would they?
Yeah.
So, as the short time, as I've been with the port, I came in late September. So I'm trying to learn a lot of that marketing and basically how these bills are put out. Occasionally, there gets to be a certain amount of moves that just make it, makes sense for it to go certain places. Perhaps there's a bulk amount of material that will go both to Chicago, but will stop maybe first in southern part, northern part of Texas or somewhere. I'm unfamiliar purely of why that would happen, but just instances when it comes to moving. Each move is how the port really makes its money. And perhaps there's a limitation on some of those moves to go there. Or that ship that they had, that they were able to get it there quicker, just happens to be there two days earlier, and that one's going to Savannah, Virginia. But generally speaking, if they're going to places like Chicago, Memphis, St. Louis, they're usually going through this terminal. I hope that answers your question. I could try and get a better one. Okay.
Other questions?
Apologize for being tired. I just ate at Longboards, had a late lunch, so.
Oh, good, you ate in Long.
Eight, Portsmouth.
Yeah.
Other questions? Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Pat?
Mrs. Neal will come forward and present the 2018 Virginia General Assembly Legislative Update, along with Deputy City Attorney Miller.
Are we ready?
She'll get it up in just a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of City Council. Tonight, my presentation will cover a few high-level bills and associated budget allocations that will become law as of July 1st of this year. Following this information, Mr. Jeff Miller, Deputy City Attorney, will brief you on a few laws and ordinances impacting local governments as of the 1st of July. And then, next, I will briefly share with you some information. Even though it's a state, I have a little bit of federal information I share with you on some legislation we've done there. And then finally, in closing, I'll provide you with an outline of our timeline for the city's 2019 legislative initiatives. We'll start with the state. Medicaid expansion was the primary legislative initiative at this General Assembly session, and the one that led to the extended budget negotiations stalling the passage of the state budget. Over 300,000 Virginians between the ages of 18 and 64 with incomes up to 138% of the 2018 federal poverty level are expected to become eligible for medical insurance. Recipients with incomes levels between 100% and 133% of the federal poverty level are required to pay copayments, everyone pays copayments. But these people are, their copayments are not to exceed 2% of their monthly income or no less than $1 per month. Inmates of local and regional jails could also qualify, producing savings for local budgets. A work requirement for able-bodied adults was central to the compromise agreed upon by Governor Northam in the General Assembly. And 5.8 million was also appropriated over the biennium to the Department of Social Services to assist with eligibility determinations. A lockout period was included for failure to comply in any three months of a year from the time of a missed premium payment. And finally, the legislators also included a rescission provision in the case that the federal government match is ended.
How long is the lockout?
I'm sorry?
How long is the lockout?
I was up to three months. You've missed three months, from my understanding. If you miss anything within three months, then you're locked out for three, yes.
For how long?
Three months. I believe, yes.
Not forever?
Not forever, no.
And that was part of the legislation? That was part of the legislation?
Agreement, yes, sir. Yes. Any other questions on the Medicaid?
What's the projected cost to the Commonwealth?
The projected cost to the Commonwealth for the expansion is 80.8 million in FY19 and 226.1 million in '20.
Mayor, we have behavioral health, social services from the state. It is estimated that there are 4,000 Portsmouth citizens through this new law that will qualify for, which will happen in January.
And I think, I don't know if I skipped over that, but all able-bodied recipients between the ages of 18 and 64 are expected to participate in this training program. That's another criteria they added. So you either have to go to school, you have to be, go into some training program, or something of that nature. And I think there's supposed to be about 40 hours a month is what you have to complete in order to remain qualified to receive benefits under the expanded Medicaid program. Moving on to the behavioral health and developmental services. This was another major area of focus for the legislators this session. The importance of addressing mental health care and opioid addiction is reflected in the amount of funding and new programs initiated by the Virginia General Assembly. In the area of mental health services, 191.7 million was allocated for behavioral health and developmental services. This amount includes 84.1 million for community mental health services. This amount means new spending for community services boards, alternative transportation for temporary detention orders, discharge assistance plans for individuals on the extraordinary barrier list at state hospitals, permanent supportive housing for 275 more individuals, discharge planning at local jails, a tele-mental health pilot program, and other services.
How much of that money goes to the local level of the 84?
It's different. We don't have that number just yet. It's going to be divided amongst the number of CSBs in the state.
It's 40. 40 CSBs.
In the area of K-12 education, direct aid to local governments, re-benchmarking took place this 2018 General Assembly session. All in all, this area of the budget fared very well. The increase of funding was about 515 million over the biennium. The increases included increases on per pupil amounts in both years of the biennium, increases in FY20 for the percent of lottery dollars directly appropriated to the school districts, up to 40%. Provisions made that school divisions be given 100% flexibility in how these funds are expended, no local matches required, and school divisions are able to carry over unexpended funds from FY18 into FY19. Local governments are encouraged to re-appropriate these funds to them. Also in the K-12 education, and the amount that they're allocated includes the state's share of the salary increases. And for all funded SOQ instructional and support positions, respective as of July 1st, 2019. Local participation is optional, but it requires at least a 3% salary increase be given during the biennium in either one of the years of the biennium or in total over both years of the biennium. They also increased funding for the preschool initiatives. And they also increased the range for the at-risk add-on supplement, raising it from 13% to 14%. In the area of the compensation board, a 2% raise for state and state-supported local employees was provided in FY20 and '19. For the state-supported local government employees, their increases effective as of July 1st, 2019. State employees' increases are effective as of July 1st, 2020. A targeted salary increase for deputy sheriffs is also provided. And the increase is expected to raise starting pay for deputy sheriffs in all localities up to $32,500 per year. Increases for certain public safety personnel as of February 1st, 2019 includes deputy sheriffs, Department of Corrections, DOC, Department of Juvenile Justice Correctional Officers, DJJ, and Virginia Marine Police. In the areas of economic development, commerce and trade, natural resources, one of the top things was the Go Virginia. They received an increased funding of $5 million in FY19 and $10 million in FY20. This increases the total of the Go Virginia package to $29.5 million in the first year and $34.5 million in the second year. The budget language increases the minimum regional funding under the per capita grants to $1 million, and enables the Go Virginia Board to grant waivers for matching funds if it's requested by the region. Also in this, in these areas, you had the Virginia Telecommunication Initiatives, Expanded Broadband Access, was funded at $4 million for each year of the biennium. Enterprise Zone Grants were increased by $1.4 million in each year of the biennium. There was $20 million provided in FY19 for Stormwater Local Assistance Fund and funding for maintenance of recognized African-American historic cemeteries, of which are Mount Cal. for maintenance of recognized African-American historic cemeteries, of which our Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex is now one, was also provided. In the areas of transportation, the General Assembly provided a net increase of 152 million, which is a combination of general and non-general funds. And rather than fund the $150 million bond package transit providers were seeking to offset the fiscal cliff, the legislators decided to create a work group to identify better long-term solutions for allocating funding and investing in transit capital needs, sorry.
Who's on the work group?
Hasn't been set up yet. Probably, it would be some of the legislators.
Is it prescribed? Is it going to be all members of the General Assembly? Will it be?
I believe it's going to be a combination, but I can check that and get back with you.
Please.
In the area of the Department of Criminal Justice Services, the 599 program or A2 localities with police departments was funded, level-funded, and each locality will be appropriated the proportionate amount that they received in FY18. And so for Portsmouth, that's $5,786,668, $5,786,668 of each year of the biennium.
So we're going to end the same?
Yes. Yes, they level-funded it. Also included in this list was the extension of the six mental health pilot programs that were initially slated to end at the end of this month. One of them is the Corp Pilot Program, which we initiated in 2016 and is operating at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. That particular program received the largest amount of the share of the grant of the 2.5 million, so it's approximately $958,000. And we're anticipating that much to be given to us for the next 12 months of the program. There was also funding for school resource officers, and that was increased by 1.3 million. And 100,000 in each year of the biennium was allocated for post-critical incident programs for public safety officers. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller. And I'll do that. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm going to go through quickly a few bills that may be of interest that were adopted in this General Assembly session. First one is HB 220. Localities have long had a provision in the Virginia Code that grants immunity for operating parks and playgrounds and recreational facilities. This bill expressly expanded that immunity to include hiking trails, biking trails, and recreational waterways. We have the Rails to Trails project getting ready to get going, so this is definitely a positive bill for the city. Next bill is HB 594. Some years ago, the General Assembly adopted a bill to give localities powers to address drug blight, meaning drug activities occurring on real property. This legislation expands drug blight to quote-unquote criminal blight, so it adds in sex trafficking, prostitution, and discharge of firearms. The drug blight statute, I don't know that it's gotten much traction. It's not a condemnation statute, and it's rather vague on what the localities' remedies really were. This bill has added a new remedy, which includes going to court and getting a judge to order revocation of the certificate of occupancy for the property. And I think that is a discreet remedy, maybe more effective than what we've had in the past.
This is any class of real property, whether it's residential or?
Yes. SB 129, the Virginia Code expressly lists certain localities who have the authority in the zoning context to require that a subsequent developer reimburse a prior developer for expenditures the prior developer may have made for off-site road improvements that serve both developments. Now, this is optional for the city. It can be adopted or not, but this legislation added Chesapeake and Portsmouth to the list of cities that have this power. So as we go through the zoning ordinance rewrite and the subdivision ordinance rewrite, this is something that will be considered. Last but not least, SB 405, wireless communications. You'll recall that last year, the General Assembly adopted a major revision regarding small cell wireless facilities where they substantially preempted local authority with respect to where providers can cite small cell facilities. That mostly dealt with attaching facilities to existing poles. And as a result, we presented to City Council, and City Council adopted a substantial amendment to Chapter 32 of the city code. We created a form agreement for the franchise agreement, and we've had two providers come in and take advantage of that so far. This year, the General Assembly addressed the placement of new poles up to a maximum height of 50 feet. And again, local discretion is significantly limited by this legislation. There is some protection for pre-existing underground utility districts. There is some protection for historic districts, but otherwise, the city's discretion is extremely limited. And we did anticipate this with what was adopted last year, so we probably won't see the type of major legislative changes in the city code.
But they still have to get a franchise to be in?
They still have to get a franchise, that's correct. So we think we substantially have what we need in the city code and the franchise agreement to protect ourselves on this. We may come back with a few tweaks to the city code to address specifically what the legislation says this year, but we think we're in decent shape. And that completes my summary.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to your first slide that spoke about the abatement of criminal blight?
No problem.
Did you mention that presently, that's pretty vague at this point?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no expectation of any ordinance coming from the city attorney's office for council to consider?
There may well be an ordinance. Once we get more into this legislation, speak with the police and the building official, we may well bring forth an ordinance on this. As I said, I think the ability to revoke a certificate of occupancy is a very specific targeted remedy, and I think that could have an impact in making owners sit up and take notice.
So in that regard, when they're saying certain property, you all are focusing on rental or commercial property?
Right now, I don't believe the legislation focuses on any particular type of property. So I don't, without having thought more about it, I don't know that the ordinance that would be presented to council would focus on any specific type of property either.
And would that be contingent upon the property owner being involved in this criminal activity or someone on the property involved in that activity?
It is not contingent on the owner himself or herself being involved. However, there is a process you have to follow as far as notifying the owner, giving the owner an opportunity to make amends, to cure the blight. And the statute does give the owner the benefit of the doubt. I mean, if the owner is taking reasonable measures to try and address the issue, including filing eviction action against a tenant, for example, then we can't go to court and get any kind of remedy.
But picking up on Dr. Whitaker, if it's owner occupied, it sounds like the remedy is that you end up with a vacant building?
Right.
How does that square with the non-taking provision of the Constitution?
Well, I think the fact that you have a court order and that they can take steps under that court order presumably to regain the certificate of occupancy, they just simply have to comply with the court order. And I'd add also that the revoking the certificate of occupancy is not the only remedy available. I mean, you can also simply get a court order ordering the owner to address the issue and then find the owner in contempt if he or she does not do so.
So could this ultimately lead to confiscation of property?
That's my question.
Well, it's really not geared toward condemnation, so I don't think it could ultimately lead to confiscation of property. It could lead to a limitation of the use of the property until the issue of the blight is addressed in accordance with the court order. But again, all this has to go through court. This is not something where we can send a letter and revoke a CO. Has to be a judicial process.
Dr. Pat.
Mr. Miller, when it comes to our public safety, particularly police, for example, where it's a club and there have been multiple, let's say in the course of a year or six months, seven months, shootings in the club, maybe a death in the club, then this would give the public safety or police an opportunity to, because right now, they would have to first start with the ABC board and dealing with that to try to get a dwelling or a club closed. That's kind of where they start right now. Instead of somebody's been shot, let's just go and take some measures to close it down, which they cannot do right now. But this would help them to be able to do that, where you say there is acts of malicious discharge of a firearm, meaning repeat it. This could help strengthen them closing it.
That's correct. It's another tool in the arsenal.
Yeah, whereas now they can't.
Other questions for down here, anybody?
Quickly. So though, I'm moving. So just really quickly, of course, you know, the federal government doesn't move as quickly as the state government on policy, so, and legislation. So while we have been monitoring what's going on at the federal level, we've weighed in on several pieces of legislation as well as those items that were public policy items included in our legislative package for support. Just wanted to quickly just bring these three things to your attention. One of the letters that we supported, bills we supported was for net neutrality to reverse the decision that was recently made by the FCC. And then also, as your intergovernmental affairs manager, I serve on the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure Committee and ICMA Government Affairs and Public Policy Committee. And the first one, we visited with legislators in Washington, DC in 2017 and urging them to fund transportation, infrastructure, and transit. And I'm pleased to say that as of the 21st of this month, the U.S. Federal Transportation Authority announced a $366.3 million competitive grant funding for transit buses projects statewide. And also for the ICMA Government Affairs and Public Policy Committee, we pressed for the passage of the Marketplace Fairness Act, which you may remember from several years ago, for taxing internet sales. And as of the 21st of this month, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of this measure. So it's projected that this may increase Virginia sales tax collections over by about $300 million. And lastly, and to wrap it up, this is a general outline for development of our 2019 legislative initiatives. Beginning next month, we'll solicit items for consideration, presenting a draft to you in August, coming back with the revised draft in September. October, the joint meeting of our council with our General Assembly delegation and the adoption of the packages by council resolution. Meeting with the Portsmouth General Delegation throughout November and December. The 3rd is the last day for pre-filing of bills, and January 9th is the first day of the 2019 session, which is the short session, 45 days. And that's the end of our presentation.
Dr. Pat, I missed the figure you gave for Medicaid expansion.
We have 4,000 Portsmouth citizens that qualify for the expansion, and that will start in January, and the state is preparing social services. I think social services between now and January will get eight additional social workers that will be implementing the expansion of this program.
So that's 4,000 additional persons?
Yes. Yes, people who are not only right now that the state have identified that they qualify. Now, we will be working not only with social services, but also with the Health Department, a collaborative effort. They have a new community, as Dr. James shared with you all, they have a new community outreach person that's going to be a part of that team so that the persons who are new qualifiers, if it's called walking and finding an address that the state has given, whatever way to try to reach them to let them know they qualify. So it's going to be an outreach effort.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The funding back on Medicaid expansion for the inmates, is that going to help the monies that you two keep talking about?
He will make a report on that shortly.
So outrageously at the jail's regional jail?
He has a report to make during the council liaison.
And under the National League of Cities with the transportation and infrastructure, 366 million that's going to be allocated nationwide?
It's a grant, a competitive grant.
Just hit it as you apply.
Yeah, and you have to compete for the funding?
Compete for that.
Yes.
Hampton Roads should apply.
Thank you.
All right, we will bring forward Mrs. Cheryl Spirey for the FY2018 end year-to-date budget report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I'll be discussing our year-to-date financial statements, and year-to-date is through May 31st of this year. It's an 11-month period. These reports are on the cash basis of accounting, and I just wanted to mention that because the cash basis is, you know, when money comes in, it's recorded, and when money goes out, it's recorded. So cash in, cash out, which is very different than the accrual basis of accounting, which is, records expenditures, what the city is obligated to pay, and records revenues, what's the underlying transaction takes place. So for instance, to draw a distinction between them, invoices that come into the city in July and maybe even the first part of August that are related to fiscal '18, we will record those back to fiscal '18, even though the money went out the door in July or August. So I want to point this out because I will, in a few months, I'll be presenting the audited financial statements, and the audited financial statements are on the accrual basis of accounting. So the numbers may look very different. We're showing our largest operating funds with our general fund being the largest. We expect the general fund to come in within budget this year. You can see as of May 31st, revenues are at 73% of budget. That would not include most of the fourth quarter real estate property taxes because most of that probably came in in June, which is why it looks a little odd there, but we do expect to be around 99% of budget in both revenues and expenditures at year-end. Public utilities, we also expect the public utilities to come in very close to where we budgeted. Expenditures seem a little low. There are some transactions that get recorded by journal entry. So our debt service payments that are made by wire and then they get recorded into the accounting system by journal entry. Those journal entries, many of them are not done until the last month of the year. So that's why that looks a little low. And then we have waste management, which also appears to be operating within budget. We, as a reminder, in the fiscal '18 budget, we included 6.8 million appropriate use of fund balance to balance the budget. Based on the revenues and expenditures that we're seeing through May, we're expecting the use of that fund balance to be less, and I'll show you more detail on the following slide. So this slide shows our general fund revenues by category. I won't go through all of them, but I've highlighted the ones that I felt like were significant to talk about. significant to talk about. Property taxes, they are up about $1.7 million year-over-year, same period of the year from last year. And again, we expect them to come in with around budget, where the budget is projected. Charges for services, those revenues compared to last year are also up, and that's based on the restructuring of some of our fees and charges for fiscal '18. Funds and forfeitures are significantly lower than budget. And last year, we saw the same thing. So that may be a trend that we may, we'll need to start watching that closer to see if those are going to permanently stay lower. Investment income, this is where we'll see a significant change in difference between what we planned for in our budget and what we have coming in. So we've got almost $600,000 more than what we budgeted. That's primarily based on some investment strategies being taken by the Treasury's Office as well as rising interest rates. The bridge loan from the state that's related to the loss of revenue at the port, that's a loan from the state. The amount of the loan is $3.4 million. We originally thought that it was coming in two installments, one installment in fiscal '18 and one in fiscal '19. Actually, it came in, we received it all. So you can see, we budgeted $1.7 for '18, and then in '19, we also budgeted $1.7, but we've already received the full $3.4.
Did this appropriation make it into the new budget? Could you check, Dr. Patton?
Yes. Yes.
It did?
Yes, it is.
So we're on track to get the 5.1 over the total period?
No, I don't know that it's a new appropriation.
I thought it was $3.4 for the total.
Oh, is that, okay. Then we're going to go back and read, reread that. Thank you. So we did receive $3.4 this year. And then we'll verify what's expected for next year. Thank you.
Be sure to put.
No, Mrs. Neal is saying it is 5.1. So we will be getting the other appropriation that is in the budget.
But do check.
We will. We'll check them off.
Thank you. So that's where you can see, as I highlighted in green, the planned use of fund balance. It's, right now, it looks like that rather than 6.8, it may be closer to us only needing the $1.7 million as we close the year. On expenditures, most of the general funds expenditures are tracking well, you know, very close to budget. We are seeing savings in the general government line items and also in community and economic development. So those projected, actual expenditures under budget expenditures are part of the contributing factor of the use of fund balance being less than what we had originally budgeted. And then this last slide shows a couple of our other proprietary funds we haven't discussed before, our smaller proprietary funds. The Parking Authority Fund appears to be tracking with the budget. Our Golf Fund appears to be slightly lower than budget at this time of the year. And then our Internal Service Funds, Risk Management, Employee Healthcare, OPEB, Garage, and Information Services, those expenditures appear to be very close to what we budgeted. That'll take any questions?
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, you have 13 items on the city manager's report tonight. And most of them are grant appropriations, but I will go through them quickly. The first is the FY 2018 Neighborhood Incentive Grants. The civic leagues of Port Norfolk, Wilson Ward, and West Park View participated in the incentive grant program this year. And this is adoption of an ordinance accepting the funds from those three civic leagues in the amount of $4,771, an appropriate and said into the general fund for use by the Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services Department in the Neighborhood Incentive Fund Grant Program. And you can see that if you look under Discussions, Port Norfolk Civic League applied for the funds to install a fitness park at Fountain Park. Their match was 2014-15, which is a part of the 4,000. Wilson Ward League applied for funds to create a passive landscape park at 2715 Bagley Street. And West Park View Civic League applied for funds to install outdoor electrical outlets at Owens Creek Park. We have encouraged and continue to encourage civic leagues to participate in the Neighborhood Incentive Fund Program. The second is the Portsmouth Cultural Arts District Tourism Marketing Grant, receipt of $10,140 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation, an appropriate and said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Marketing, Communications, and Tourism for a campaign to publicize the Portsmouth Cultural Arts District. And there will be a presentation coming before you all this summer as it regards to the cultural arts district. The next is FY 2018 Virginia Opal Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery Grant. And this is an adoption of an ordinance accepting $15,000 of funding received from Virginia Department of Behavioral Healthcare and Development of Services, appropriating the said amount in the FY 2018 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by the department to build capacity to address opioid abuse. The next is contractual detention services. And this is an adoption of an ordinance authorizing a transfer of $149,410 from the non-departmental transfer and contingencies line item in the FY 2018 general fund budget to the contractual detention home line in the juvenile court service category for the FY 2018 general fund budget. And I'd like to share with you that last week, Mrs. Spivey, myself, and our budget officer met with Judge Alotha Willis and other juvenile court services staff to discuss with them the continuing increase in the cost for detention of youth that are part of the circuit court system. And they projected that they would only have between nine and 13 youth in the program in their budget. But we have 16 that have been a part of the detention program. We have a contract with Chesapeake, and they have the detention home. The judges determine where they desire to send these youth. And the cost for youth in detention center per night is $190. And there are some youth who are in the system that have been waiting for final determination or trial up to, some of them came in in 2017. So Judge Willis indicated that she would be having a meeting with the other judges to help them to kind of understand just the increase in cost to the city. Currently, right now, in their budget, we project to spend totally across, what, almost $3 million that addresses our youth who are in different kinds of retention or programs. So that is what this item is. The next is the Sheriff's Inmate Telephone Commission. It's adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $33,675 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 29 general fund operating budget for use by the sheriff's office. And the sheriff receives these funds from the inmate telephone system. This one helps to offset costs within the sheriff's office general fund budget. The next is relocation precincts number 39 voting place and change of precinct name. Adoption of an ordinance to amend section 10-122 of chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006, as amended to change the voting location of precinct number 39 from Rivershore Baptist Church to Churchill Primary and Intermediate School located at 5700 Hedge Road Lane, and to formally change the name of precinct number 39 to Churchill Primary and Intermediate School.
Feel welcome to change.
Okay. The next is the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Payment Schedule. Adoption of an ordinance establishing a monthly payment schedule for delivery of the city's local share allocation of the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools operating budget.
Is that schedule included in our documents?
This is going in the document. This is the ordinance for the document.
But is there a schedule that has already been developed?
This is the schedule that's attached in here.
Okay, that's what I was, I didn't see it in the document.
It shouldn't be in here. I thought it was. Yeah, it is.
It's my point.
It's in the ordinance. Yeah. It's back here.
It's in our box.
Is it?
It is.
Yeah. The next is a transfer of CIP funds for the Mount Herman Elementary School roof and HVAC replacement project. Adoption of an ordinance to amend the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund budget by authorizing the transfer of $125,000 from the Woodrow Wilson High School HVAC cooling tower replacement project to the Mount Herman Elementary School roof and HVAC replacement project. And this is because that came in at a lower cost, and now we can apply the money over to finish the roofing at the elementary school. The next are two Virginia ABC alcohol education and prevention grant programs. And this is in the amount of $2,500 from the Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Board, an appropriate and said amount to the FY Grant Fund for the use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund an alcohol education program. The next is a FY Virginia Ruse Camp Grant for Summer 2018. That's an adoption of an ordinance accepting a Virginia Ruse Camp Grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Attorney General's Office and appropriating said to the FY 2018 Grants Fund for Use of the Portsmouth Police Department for Youth Outreach. The next is a respite care for foster families. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $220 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, an appropriate and said amount in the FY 2018 Social Service Fund for use by the Department of Social Services for respite care. The next is Elevate SNAP ENT Pilot Program. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the United States Department of Agriculture through the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $12,000, an appropriate and said amount in the FY 2018 Social Service Fund for the Elevate SNAP Employment and Training Pilot Program. And members of council, I have asked Mrs. Littlehill to look and go back over a three-year period and develop a report so that we will know what are the results of the programs which we're receiving, particularly that are supposedly helping people with their GEDs, getting jobs for individuals, where the replacements. And so she is working on that now. So that will be coming back to you through the summer. The next is a family partnership meeting incentive funds. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Service in an amount of $10,200, an appropriate and said amount in FY 2018 Social Service Fund for family partnership meeting incentive programs. And these funds are to assist with costs for local staff expenses associated with coordinating family meeting designation such as payment to train facilitators for conducting programs and search activities to locate and coo family members and payments and coaches for internal facilitators. Funds allow for the purchase of tangible items used to support family partnership meetings processed such as laptops, printers, and flip charts. And this will be utilized to support family participation. There is no local match required. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this concludes the city manager's report for tonight's City Council meeting. I would like to call your attention to the City Council report back for June 12th, which was the past meeting. The request was provide Dr. Cox's toll study to the city's legislative delegation, staff to follow up with Dr. Cox. Cook on the availability to discuss study results with the legislative delegation. Mayor indicated he would like the study results presented at an upcoming HRTPO meeting. Because the HRTPO will not meet in September, and Dr. Cook is out of the area most of the summer and fall, Dr. Cook will present the toll study update at the October 18th, 2018, at the HRTPO meeting that's already scheduled. And Mr. Baldwin has confirmed from Dr. Cook on his availability on the said date and the HRTPO scheduling. Also, Dr. Cook has requested that the meeting with the state legislators take place during the same week, October 15th to 17th. And Mayor, in following up with this, Dr. Cook is out of the area and does not come back into the area until this time. He is at the, I think, the University of Wyoming during the summers teaching and serving as a consultant. The next was a request for 15 Willmose Road. How much did the city pay for the parcel of land? We actually answered that during the meeting, but we've documented that the city did not pay any money for the property when acquired. The request, report back on what the comprehensive plan identifies is the use for the property at 303 Bedford Court. The property at this location has mixed-use identification in the comprehensive plan. The request is request for information on if requests for rezoning reused as a way to get a use permit approved without having to go through the use permit process. The planning department's answer is no. There have been no evidence of such requests. The next is rezoning for general mixed requests. Rezoning from general mixed use to industrial light on the next agenda, please make sure the original language is included on the agenda and in conferring with the city attorney and with Mrs. White, the city clerk. The item will be reflected on the next agenda, which comes back to you on July 24th, 2018. The last, staff to come back with a plan for Portsmouth Boat Club to bring back the Cock Island Race for next year. Would also like a history of the event and revenue generated. The background information as research from records and memories of individuals who have had some involvement in the race is contained within a report back that you have in front of you, with the history and the report back. Staff will continue to explore what are the next steps in consideration for return of the race in the FY 2019 budget. So I would ask for you to read the report. We did reach out and Mr. Pace and his team actually talked with the original creators of it and actually received a report from Judge Moore Whitlow of its history. So all of that is in front of you for your reading. It's in the box.
Council members, the report that Dr. Patton just gave is under Presentations in the box. So you don't have a hard copy in front of you. We have been putting them under Presentations in the box, so you have them readily available.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the Cock Island Boat Race, I was reading the information pertaining to the origin of it. And it appears that, as was stated, I believe at the last meeting, that this is a privately-sponsored event that somehow the city 30 years ago was contributing money to for free rum, free music, and free dockage. And so my question is, how is it now that council will be considering funding a private group that, according to the report, is not a 501(c)(3), which means that it has circumvented the regular process that 501(c)(3)'s go through in the city to get funding through our regular grants? And so how is it now that we will be giving consideration to this particular private-sponsored event?
Dr. Whitaker, if you would read the entire report. Dr. Whitaker, if you would read the entire report back, which encompasses years from the foundering of Portsmouth Events in which the city, back whenever Portsmouth was founded and started, became a sponsor and a part of funding the Cock Island Race. The discontinuation of funding of that race came in the twenty sixteen budget when there was the decision made to take those funds, and I'm dealing with, I wasn't here, so I'm dealing with the report back, to take those funds that were designated there and they started the Sunset Thursdays, which was about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That was a decision made by council in that twenty sixteen budget, which the deputy city manager, and I can't call his name right now, was the one who kind of, what's his name? Mr. Goffrey was the one that presented you all that budget during that time. What was left in the budget, as I shared at the last meeting when I arrived, was fourteen, was about fourteen thousand dollars, which in investigating being, I was new here, that was money that had been put in a fund, which was, what did you all call the fund?
Donation line.
A donation line. Departments, cities, I mean, city departments had donation lines. And we found that in Parks and Recreation, there was a donation line that said paraphernalia, sale of whatever this Cock Island Race. So that was the money, that was the last money that they got for the last race. We shared with them that to qualify for any kind of grant programs or anything or sponsorship, they would have to become a five oh three C one organization. And at that time, they indicated they were not interested in it.
Okay.
So that's where we.
So my question is, it's mentioned here about how it would be considered in the two thousand and nineteen budget.
Well, it has been indicated that they may consider becoming a five oh three C one organization, so if they become one.
Right. Well, that wouldn't be a council issue. That would be where they would go through the regular grant process.
That's right.
So that's why I'm saying, why is it coming, why would it be coming back before council if it's not a council-sponsored event? They shouldn't get any type of special treatment than any other five oh one C.
We asked for this report.
You should be talking to them.
Well, then, the question becomes then, how is it that we can ask for certain privileges for, number one, a group that has been funded outside of city policy because they're not a five oh one C three? How is it that this group that according to the report that has only attracted about five hundred people at most, which is less than one percent of the city population, has received this type of special preferential treatment? And then how is it that now again, council members are advocating for a very exclusive group to get city funding? And that's why I'm questioning, why should this come back to council versus other privately sponsored groups who have gone through the proper steps of five oh one C three? And we aren't advocating for those groups. They go through the regular process.
Thank you. Bill.
Well, I'll say it again. You know, as a city, we need to revisit all the functions, whether they're five oh one, three C, or private function. We need to know what the return on investment to the city is, either through meal tax or whatever benefit that they may bring. But I will say that we need organization like Portsmouth Events. We need more of those, I won't call them exclusive events, I don't know what that really means, but we need events that bring people to this city that will spend money, they'll see what type of city that we have that may down the road spur investment. Portside, we got Portside being rebuilt, so we need more functions. So anytime that perhaps this group that we're talking about renewing like Portsmouth Events, they should be working with organizations to have events similar to Norfolk. I always mention Norfolk because as you drive down Waterside Drive, just about every week you see an event. And they're not just having those because they like events, they're having them because they are providing a return on the investment to their city. And we need to do the same. So I'm not gonna say that one group, oh, this group is exclusive, this group is not exclusive. I don't think it's our job to put labels on any group. I think if it's a function that our citizens can go and enjoy and it's a law-abiding function, by golly, we should be supporting it for the return on investment, whether it's a maritime event, whether it's a Yemoja, or whether it's maybe some type of seafood festival like we used to have when the Chamber of Commerce had an outing committee. You're right, council's not an outing committee. That's why we need an organization that can make recommendations, that can go out and get sponsorships and private money for these functions. I think it's very narrow-minded to try to single out one group as exclusive and ask why we've provided support. Heck, we've got nightclubs that we've provided police support to, and I never ask for expenditure on overtime hours or anything relative to that because I know that they generated tax revenue for the city. So we don't need to be doing a P and L on everything coming down the pike. I want to see more functions in this city, not less.
Anybody else want to comment on this? I'll recognize you, I just want to make sure that, okay, Dr. Whitaker.
I don't think the issue is the functions. The issue is the process. And my question, once again, is how is it that over this time period, a private exclusive group, by exclusive, that's not a negative connotation, that's just, we have groups that are.
What do you mean by exclusive? Boat owners?
You want me to define exclusive in this case? That is when it is not generally open for general membership.
The functions are open?
You asked me to.
I'll debate you on it, yeah.
You asked me to define it. I was trying to define it for you. It's a boat club. The name in and of itself. The name in and of itself is exclusive. And you can say the functions are open, but I think that there are listeners and people in this room who know that how functions are socially structured can impact on access. And so my point is simply that if we're gonna start funding private groups like this and arbitrarily deciding which groups will get this type of funding, particularly when you look over this time period and the city, based on this report, has contributed approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that doesn't even include some of the other expenses. And all you see is a return of fourteen thousand dollars for about five hundred people. I think that deserves scrutiny. And I think if the nightclub, that deserves scrutiny. And so the issue, I'm all for economic development and having events, but let's do it on a level playing field. Let's do it on a level playing field where we apply the same criteria to all groups because I can certainly note that there are private organizations that have never been able to take advantage of this type of city support.
We're looking forward. This has been a good debate, but we don't have a question before us pertaining to funding this group or any other group. All we've asked is a report from the city manager, which she is giving a status report.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor. There was a, the question was basically, what would we consider in the two thousand and nineteen budget and particularly with this group? My, the issue I'm raising is why should that be coming before council?
It's not in the budget.
I didn't say it's in the, I said the two thousand and nineteen, I thought it was mentioned in the report. And what shall we do as far as next steps? And so my question again is, or not even a question, but a statement, is that that should not even be coming before council. They should follow the regular process like any other group.
Most of you know that I was a member of the Portsmouth Events Board back in the late eighties, a few years after this particular event started, back when Judge Whitlow and Judge Hawks and Ward Robinett were all the Portsmouth Events Board. The fact of the matter is, I agree with you, Dr. Whitaker. You're absolutely right. And what we're talking about, as far as I'm concerned, is not a how or why the city council should put tax money into any particular event. What the city council should be doing is funding the startup for a Portsmouth Events-type group that is their own five oh one C three, that can raise private dollars to incentivize any type of activity, particularly those that involve our waterfront.
That's right.
That's what the city council, in my opinion, ought to be doing. And many of us have said that for many years now. Portsmouth Events was the right activity. It was shut down for financial reasons, for the right reasons at the time, long before I got to this council. But the formula, either joining with Fest Events or having our own, is the right formula. So you raise private money and put that back into your restaurants and your stores and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Bill.
You know, we've brought this up, and I've brought that very thing up that the vice mayor's talking about, but all we're doing is talking. Mayor, I would like to see staff come back with some type of a plan on how we could revisit an organization like the former Portsmouth Events.
Okay, that's a request from Bill. We have consensus. We don't have to look for our good models over and off with Fest Events. Is there a consensus for the city manager to do this?
Yeah, and let me just say, that's a totally different discussion than bringing a private group to the table to discuss. That's totally different.
Yes.
And we meant Ray's asking.
Yeah, all I was gonna say is that this was just for information and that's what the city manager gave us. Any entity or anybody that comes, any of us have the right for the information. You know, there's nothing we're gonna do with it, you know, unless a majority of us decide we're gonna do that. Then we will discuss it. But it was just for information. It was information that I was interested in because I never knew anything about Cock Island or how it originated. So that's all it was to me.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure with the information we were gonna move in the right direction with it.
I think we are. And this has been a great discussion. Good points. Okay. We have consensus for the, okay.
Mayor, I have one other item. And this last statement, you have given us the assignment previous. The lead on that assignment is Mr. Lavor's pace, and we will be bringing back a presentation on what we're proposing for the events like, and I'm saying events like because we don't have a name, organization that we will be proposing just before you. Okay? I have one more thing, mayor. I'm calling to your attention the public utilities permit notification that I reminded you of today as it relates to this upcoming weekend, we will have in our local newspaper a requirement by the Virginia Department of Health. And this requirement is a notification as a result of two occurrences, one of which there was a delayed shipment of a sample of water to a Vermont laboratory in twenty fifteen, which the state called our attention to in twenty eighteen. And with that delayed sample, the not getting there in the ninety-six hours, the state made the city resubmit that sample, and when the sample was tested, there were no findings. The second was a submission of twenty-two samples, of which one box was not checked for a treatment approach. And with that, they are requiring that that notice go out to the public, and that is not uncommon. And we have until March of twenty nineteen to do it, but we're doing it this upcoming week. That concludes my presentations.
Let's go through the city council liaison reports, and I'll start with Ray. Bill.
I attended the P P S C meeting today as the alternate, and Chris Gullickson, who's the Economic Development Manager for the Virginia Port Authority, did a presentation similar to what we had tonight. Very good presentation on what the potential is on the port expansion, also what could be some uses for PMT as the port expansion comes to fruition. And that was pretty much it. There was a closed session.
Two reports. One will be from PRHA and the second will be from the Regional Broadband Committee, and Mr. Daniel Jones will give that report. So first up, with PRHA, it passed four resolutions. One for the sale of infill lots in the Parkview Community. They're gonna be building single-family homes, the Pyramid Enterprises. Second one was the twenty-nine lots that we discussed when we had our joint meeting with them. They have been conveyed over to the city, and I think there's some seventeen other lots that they're waiting for our authority for them to convey those over. The third one was the authorization of execution of development agreement between, for Robinson Development Group for the property at George Washington Highway. We've been talking about that, so they have done that. And the last one was a resolution of the execution of the agreement for American Retail Developers. We're looking forward to this at Frederick Boulevard Seaboard Square. So they have a developer that's gonna be developing that land. And of course, we all know that Brian Donahue will be joining Economic Development Authority soon. And also the renovations on Dale's Home and Lincoln Park are underway.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question in regards to the land transfer, the lot transfers. Are those taxable? PRHA pays taxes on those parcels?
I don't think so.
I think it was a pilot.
Do you know?
No, they don't.
Payment in lieu.
But when we sell them, we can be into taxing them.
At least just a payment in lieu of taxes.
A pilot.
Only on the, some of the public housing properties, but not on the individual parcels that are vacant.
But when we get them back, Dr. Whitaker, then taxes can be, sell them, taxes can be.
I think so.
Yeah.
You good?
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of city council. This is gonna be a brief presentation concerning the Regional Broadband Steering Committee, of which Portsmouth is a member of. The presentation outline will cover the Regional Broadband Steering Committee, the Regional Connectivity Ring, and the transatlantic cable landings that is taking place in Virginia Beach. The Regional Broadband Steering Committee was formed in January of twenty eighteen as a direct result for bringing broadband as an integral part of economic development to the region. The locality members make up the steering committee of a council person and the city manager for each locality that is within the regional HRPDC formation. The locality interest was first put out to all localities, both the south side and the peninsula, to form a regional broadband, not only to connect the cities but to connect to the cables, provide municipal access, spur economic development. So the actions that were taken last meeting was to do the funding allocation for a thirty percent design and architectural, which that will include the fiber design of the backbone of the network through the cities that would reach municipal facilities. of the network through the cities that would reach municipal facilities, economic development corridors, higher education, things of that sort. Each locality provided funding for that. And from Portsmouth's standpoint, when we drafted our Fiber Master Plan, we already have the design and architectural done. So, so no matter which way the Regional Connectivity Ring decides to enter Portsmouth, we already have that laid out as to how it gets into Portsmouth, touches all of, right, has all of our stakeholders and assets, and then exits Portsmouth, goes to the Suffolk, Newport News, Chesapeake, wherever it needs to go.
Mayor, I think it's important to say that Portsmouth is the only city in Hampton Roads that has their study already done, and at that meeting, the amounts of monies that the city will have to pay were laid out. Portsmouth amount is zero.
So they're expecting the design deliverables due back slightly towards the end of this year, and they will outline the cost to do the South Side portion of the Regional Connectivity Ring, what the share for each locality will be if there is one, and then the timeframe at which this can be completed. So as I was saying, the Regional Connectivity Ring, it consists of, currently right now is Phase 1, is Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach. Now Phase 2 will then be the Peninsula, Newport News, Hampton.
Williamsburg.
Right, doing that. And then Phase 3 will be your outlined districts, basically covering between the three phases, all 17 of the HR PVC localities. As I mentioned, the primary goal of the Regional Connectivity is to spur economic development, because as you seen the presentation last night, this will transform how business is conducted. As well, it will further support the public safety and educational communications throughout all regions. Having public safety support and being able to have real-time information, no matter which Hampton Roads locality you're in, is time-saving and beneficial. As well, it will support the unserved and underserved initiatives of which we are pursuing. As we said, it will include all municipalities. Now here's the, one of the last points that we want to make. This is the cable landings that come into various ports of the United States. This is the East Coast. As you can see, you have two coming into Virginia Beach, the Bruasa and the Maria Cable. Those two cables combined have more bandwidth than every other cable that you see on that picture.
In the United States, wow.
So to put that into terms, the bandwidth combined on those two cables will enable, if someone could, the ability to stream 71 million high-definition movies a second.
A second, wow.
It is 16 million times faster than your home internet connection.
Jesus.
And would enable you to download 10,000 HD movies a second.
In seconds. Somebody said, Jesus.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's way over my head. Can I add something to that, too? I mean, with our CIOs, I mean, we have a, a great CIO here, and he's able to communicate with the other cities, and so it just makes us shine.
It makes us shine. We really shine.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr..
And that fits in with one of our big things.
That's a good, yeah, smart city. We are definitely in that direction of moving.
Let's, let's go around the table, Elizabeth.
The Port gave my Port presentation. I, this morning, one thing from economic development, they have selected new leadership to begin the Fourth of July. The new chairman of the Economic Development Authority will be Kathy Revel. This morning, while Councilman Moody was attending PPIC, I attended a regional air service forum, which had some international executives in air service, the director of the Norfolk Airport, the director of the Newport News Airport, there were probably close to 100 people there. Mostly business community types, the Navy, a few other elected officials. Our planning director attended with me. I have a written report I will send to you all tomorrow, of interest, I think, to everybody. It was a very good use of time.
And this was coordinated by the Planning District Commission?
Planning District Commission.
Yes, first, the parking authority, we did not have a meeting. It was determined there was no new information to discuss, it was canceled. Last week, we did have the meeting with Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, so I'm gonna give you all some of the, and that was some of the stuff we were talking about earlier, some of the medical updates. In the month of May, it's been $118,000 on, they have 39 patients that have HIV, so that was the monthly cost. They said on average, it's about $100,000 a month. 15 of those 39 patients are over the age of 65. Currently have seven pregnant females in the facility, and one of them has twins, so at this time, they consider her at a high risk. We have two paraplegic at the facility.
Or student.
And then the other issue was, once we started in March, a lot of discussion came up that David Hackworth became the interim superintendent in March. And we've had so much information, and as we visit, several of us were at the VML Day in Richmond, and they were talking, as Dr. Patton was sharing earlier, about the Medicaid and some of the issues, whether it would cover some of the inmates. Dr. Patton was working directly with Colonel Hackworth on this issue, and they have investigated and found out that the information is correct, and they can, but I think some of it's limited to if they're admitted in the hospital, there are certain requirements, but they are eligible to receive some Medicaid payments for their treatments. So that is an advantage that we're moving going forward. Another issue I'd brought up, one of my previous reports, was about there were some significant overpayments that were done based on some individuals that had been released, they were still not in custody of the facility, but medical was charged in the facility for it. That is being taken care of. I can't get into real specifics, because some of that was in a closed session, but it's being dealt with, and it is being taken care of favorably for the jail. One of the most important things, well, there's another issue, they are housing, we've had some issues about juveniles, and just like the report, we're talking about what it costs to have juveniles. They have created one section of one pod to hold juveniles, and when you're holding juveniles, you have to have them totally separate from adults. They can't even see each other. The only time they can pass in the hallways is long as they're in escort with another guard in the facility. So they have this section set up, so I asked a question of how many cells are in that section? There's a total of 16 beds in there, currently have seven juveniles, so that leaves nine beds open. But these are only for juveniles that have been adjudicated and have deemed to be an adult based on the courts. So at that point, it leaves nine vacant beds, so we have to consider, and I had mentioned Dr. Patton, maybe it's a possibility if we have other jurisdictions that have adjudicated juveniles that could fit that facility, maybe we could open those specific beds up to jurisdictions that don't participate in the regional jail at a daily cost to hold these individuals, because we can't use those beds for anything else, because they're dedicated for juvenile block. So that's something we're working with. And one of the most important things that we did last week, the board, we had a discussion, and we performed as a board interim ectomy. What we did is we removed interim from Colonel Hackworth's superintendent position. So we voted to make him the permanent superintendent. The, the, the press announcement came out today, and I'm just gonna read one little paragraph from that. It says, it says, "We are really impressed with the way Superintendent Hackworth came in and addressed some of the things that were on the table, a top priority list for the board. Of course, we really were focused on getting the vacancies down, and he has done a great job with that." And that was a quote from Chairman Martin A. Thomas Jr. Example of that is, in March, when he came in, there were over 40 vacancies in the jail. Today, that is less than 10 vacancies. So with him and his team and their HR department, they're doing outstanding job, they're doing a lot of job fairs and doing a lot of in-house things, and bringing in candidates and streamlining the process to get individuals hired and get them in the academy to get them certified as officers. So all that's looking really good. According to the information, on May 31st, Portsmouth, we currently had 191 of our inmates housed there. We have 230 beds that we're contracted with, so at this time, we have 39 empty beds that we're paying, paying for, and that's something that needs to be addressed between the Sheriff's Department and the regional jail, because we're paying for those beds whether there's somebody in them or not. So that's something that needs to be addressed. But everything, and I agree with what Chairman Thomas said, the last, there has been more accomplished in the last three months, as him being an interim, than has occurred, I can only speak for the previous 12 months, because that's the only time that I have been involved with it. But things are, are really looking up. From information I'm receiving, the morale's looking up, because there was so much mandatory overtime, they were requiring officers to do, because there was so much staff shortages, that has cut back at least in half, and they're working to totally remove any required overtime. So it's making the environment better for the employees, so the entire facility is moving in, in the right direction.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker. Okay, we have a need for a closed session. Is there a motion?
I leave the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711, A1, total purpose of discussion, and some secondary inspection candidates for, and appointees to boards and commissions.
Any discussion or motion, or would you call the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Ms. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.